Welcome to Tuesday, March 9th, 2021 Regular Selectmen's Meeting. We have all of our selectmen present today along with the town manager, the town clerk, and special guest appearing, Rick Vandenberg tonight. Please stand with me and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order is the approval of the February 9th minutes. We tabled these from last week.
I'll move that we accept the minutes as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. No further discussion. I'll go through the roll. Is Ken?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And Mark, you were there for part of the meeting, so... Yes. As Mark Snoddo answered, he said yes, and I am a yes also. We also have...
Hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you now, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you. We all have minutes from Tuesday, February 23rd meeting, our last meeting. And Mark was absent that day, so do I...
I'll move that we accept the minutes as presented.
A second, a motion.
Motion, a second. Without further discussion, I'll go through the roll. Is Ken?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. And Mark was absent, so I'm assuming you... All right, we have our first public comment. Nobody's called or sent emails. We have no public hearing tonight. There's our reports of committees. We have no BCTV or Envision-Burwick committees. I want to just mention this one item here. We have the reports of the committees on here, but the only two that are ever listed are the BCTV and the Envision-Burwick Committee. And, you know, I don't know why that is.
Well, you have some new members coming on to the Recreation Committee, so I think with Angela here, we can get some information out to the public because there's quite a bit of activity going on in organizing and events coming up for March and April. So I'll talk to them about that.
Thank you. We have no department reports, but we do have a presentation. Rick Vandenberg, a draft analysis of the Brownfield cleanup alternatives. Hey, Rick, how you doing?
Great, how are you?
Bad.
Did you say bad?
Not too bad.
Oh, not too bad, good. Well, it's good to hear then. So if it's all right, I'd like to share my screen, so I have a little presentation prepared. Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'll start the presentation then, assuming that it wants to start. Here we go. So I'm here this evening to talk about the next steps at the former Prime Tanning, which now we affectionately refer to as the Edge. And the reason I'm here is that Great Falls Construction and their, and the ownership property, JCS-16, has applied for and is in the process of receiving additional Brownfields funding to pay for some more next step work at the site. And that's what we've done. We've sort of helped them get ready to take on those next steps. And for those of you who are familiar with the property, we've got, you know, as you probably drive by it, you see all that rubble that's there. That's what we call a temporary cover system that was engineered to protect the public in the interim before that property gets redeveloped. And now, as we move closer to the redevelopment of the property, we have to prepare to replace that temporary cover system with a permanent cover system. And so as a part of getting this additional money, there are some additional steps. And one nice thing about that is that using these federal funds requires that we outreach to the public, which is great, because now I can come on and inform you as to what the next steps are on the property. And you can sort of inform a conversation. And the one thing that the public should take advantage of is that the document, James Belissimo has the document, and I'm going to arrange for James to put some of these documents on the website that are detailing the next steps. And as a part of that, we can kind of get ready to receive your comments and incorporate any comments that you might have or any questions you might have. We can answer that to the public, so you can understand sort of what's about to happen on the property. So, you know, kind of to that end, you know, Great Falls obviously is going to redevelop the property, and we've had to take a reevaluation of the cleanup strategy for the property. And you'll see the two images that are shown here. One is sort of an aerial photograph of the site, and it shows, you can see all the rubble areas, you know, kind of, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but this area is all the rubble and all the temporary cover system. There's a permanent cover system here in this area, and there's some asphalt in this area. All this stuff here is going to be replaced as they redevelop the property. Current plans call for what we call Building A, the largest building on the property, to come down. Building B will come down, and Building C will come down. This is the L-shaped building, it's a little harder to see. This L-shaped building, when you look over here, this is Great Falls, this is their redevelopment plan, at least as it stands right now, for the property. And you'll see that the L-shaped building is proposed to stay on the property, and we're going to address, you know, contamination beneath that building a little bit differently. But so what the remedy is, that we're going to do, is we drafted this new remedial action completion alternatives that defines what will happen next, what the best remedy is to clean up the property. We have to go through the process because the federal money is being used. And ultimately, what we've done, and we have some presumptive remedies, and this picture that you see is, I put this in here so you can see and remember kind of what this property looked like in the middle of tearing down all these buildings. I mean, obviously, it looked, it looks a lot better now than it did then. And now compared to what it's going to look like a few years from now, it's going to look a lot better in a few years, obviously. But we have several remedies that are the same remedies, by the way, that we originally proposed several years ago. And that is that we're going to take these additional three buildings down, and we're going to take them down because there's some sources of volatile organic compounds underneath them that we're going to want to have removed prior to constructing any new buildings. There's some asbestos on the roofs of the building left in the form of flashing. We left it originally in the past phases of work because these buildings were proposed to be rehabbed, and we didn't want water infiltration. So now that the buildings are going to be demolished, that asbestos needs to come out. Building C, the whole roof, that small office building, that whole roof is asbestos. And then the two other buildings, the L-shaped building, which is staying, and Building B, a tiny little sliver building, both have asbestos flashing on them that needs to come out. And then we're also preparing, as we move forward, to do what we call install vapor mitigation, vapor mitigation systems in each of the building, because the required, Main DEP is requiring that any new building considers the infiltration of any vapors underneath the building into those buildings. And so we're preemptively going to install piping for systems called sub-slab depressurization systems, which will protect the occupants of the new buildings from any vapors that might be underneath the building. We're also going to remove any VOC sources under the selected alternative. So we're going to go in as we take the buildings down, and we're going to assess around the footprint of those buildings prior to doing the redevelopment to understand if there are VOCs there, and if they are there, we're going to remove them. And so that's in a nutshell. And by the way, that's the same, like I said, has anything changed from the last time I was here talking about the remedies? Nothing's really changed. It's just now that they're going for, they went for a new loan with Southern Main Planning and Development, which I think they're borrowing about $600,000 from, which will bring the total now for this property to well over $2 million worth of federal funding that will help the redevelopment and move this project forward. So because of the federal funding, they've got to go through this, and we had to reconsider and kind of consolidate. We had two documents for parts of the property, and we needed to consolidate those two documents in one amendment and just talk about that as we move forward. And so it's one concise document. So that analysis of Brownfield's cleanup alternatives that I referred to is going to be available, you know, with James. James has that, and he's the town planner. You can always email James and request that document, and he'll make a copy available to you. And we're also going to make a copy so you can download it and put it on the website. There's a section on the town's website for documents related to prime, and I'm going to have James put that there. We're receiving comments on the analysis of Brownfield's cleanup alternatives all the way through March 26th. So you have plenty of time to get comments to me, and plenty of time for me to consider those comments, respond, and incorporate any thoughtful considerations into the documents that we have. My contact information is shown here, easy to get in touch with. In fact, if you email me, you'll get an email back that'll show that'll include my cellphone. I always make myself available to talk about prime tanning because it's something that's obviously near and dear to my heart. So just in case you haven't seen it, this is the redevelopment plan, and you'll notice in that this is the L-shaped building for reference. This is Sullivan Street along here, obviously School Street and Wilson Street here. Town Hall is right about here. The L-shaped building is the only building that remains, and under all of these other buildings, we're going to be constructing a permanent cover system. The foundations will be installed, and that will serve as part of that permanent cover system. But then within these buildings, we'll go PVC piping to serve as the element for the sub-slab depressurization system. They're also designing specifically to park, as you can see some parking underneath some of these buildings. That parking will serve two functions. While you can drive under the building and park, and it hides some of that parking, the other thing is having parking on the first floor of a building also protects it from vapor intrusion. So if there are VOCs that might come up from the soil, it's going to go into that parking space, and then because those parking areas are usually open to the atmosphere, you know, that any VOC is just naturally de-gassed out of there. So you can see these are all new buildings, and then any green space that you see will have a cover system underneath it. And any sidewalks will also have a cover system on it. So for the greens, the green areas, this is the permanent cover system already, there's already a system here. And basically, that consists of what we call a marker layer, which shows the difference between the contaminated soil and the clean soil. And above that marker layer sits eight inches of granular fill and four inches of loam and seed. And so any green space that you see here will have that same treatment. Any asphalt will go directly on top of the contaminated soil. And then what happens is there gets published a map that shows all of these things and where the contaminated soil is. And then that way, in the future, when somebody digs, they know if they go below asphalt or they go below cover system, they know that they're going to be running into contaminated soil. And there's a requirement that has to be listed in what we call a declaration of environmental covenants that says if you dig on the property, you have to notify Main DEP and let them know what you're going to do, so they can make you aware of the potential issues associated with the contaminated soil on the property. So here's just another, there's again another aerial photograph that shows the rubble and the temporary cover system and the permanent cover system that was installed. And this is also a plan that shows, this shows where we're going to remove the buildings, and these little red dots show that we're going to be doing test pitting underneath some of these buildings to do test pits and collect soil samples for VOCs, and we're going to do a field screening to help us inform whether we've got any volatile organic sources that need to be removed, that soil can be taken off before they construct a new building and hauled off and disposed of at a local landfill, like something like Turnkey. And then when it comes to this building, what we'll do is, John from Great Falls Construction has indicated that he might want to go, there's a hotspot source of VOCs that's been identified from previous work kind of in this area of the building. And then also for Building A, there's a hotspot in this area, these two test pits. And what we'll do is, obviously, we're going to have access when we take this building down, but for this building, we may actually go in and cut the floor out and take the contaminated soil out that way, but then also we may do what's called a vented floor, where we'll actually put in PVC piping on the existing floor, put gravel around it, and build a floor on top of that. And that will allow active vapors to be removed between the two. And the reason we do that is that the groundwater is really high there, and so we don't want to, we don't want to put any sub-slab piping underneath the slab there. We want to have it above that, so it's not in the water table. And that's it. I'm going to stop sharing my screen. That's, well, actually, let me back up and see if I can back up in case, let me leave this up in case there are any questions from the selectmen or from the public. And that's, in a nutshell, that's kind of the presentation. Really, there's nothing new going on, but we're sort of moving forward with the old remedy and hope to be starting soon. I know that they've hired the asbestos contractor, and they're going to start, I think, as early as Monday on their work.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions for Rick from the selectmen?
No question. Thank you for the presentation, Rick. Very informative.
Of course.
So yeah, Rick, you had mentioned getting additional money for the cleanup. So could you get us the total number of the grants that we got? You know, I know it's well over $2 million now, but, you know, I'd like to have that figure available. People are always asking what they get for their tax dollars and stuff. You know, we can show them now that they're actually getting something for their tax dollars, so. If there are no other questions or comments, thank you, Rick.
Of course.
As informative as always. We'll move on. Unfinished business, I don't believe we have any. No. We have a town manager's report.
I sent you all a copy of the MOU that we've been requested to participate with all the towns in New York County. There was a request to have people, if we have some volunteers who would like to help in the vaccination process. Sanford has the mega center, the old Marshall Building, and they are always looking for some help. They'll get paid. So some of our on-call force and full-time people from the fire department would like to participate in that. So the MOU lays out the whole process. They'll be under our insurance, and they'll get, we'll get reimbursed for paying them through the COVID-19 bill that should be approved maybe today, tonight. So everything will be sent off to York County EMA, Mr. Cleves, and so I'm asking you to approve that tonight, so we can move this forward and get the help they need and get the people taken care of. So I just need a motion for approval of the memorandum of understanding for the County of New York Emergency Management Agency to provide help for that COVID-19 mutual aid.
A motion, a second. We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion?
Hey, Steve, I have one question about that. That MOU looks like it's pretty generic. I'm surprised we didn't have something like that already in place. The cover letter said specifically for volunteering for the COVID-19 shots, but the MOU is very generic in terms of anytime we have an emergency, and I want to make sure that everybody understands that. Personally, I think we need to have that, and we should have had that long ago.
Long ago.
For New York County.
Yeah, I think this whole COVID-19 has brought out some things that have been missing, and not just here, but nationwide. So yeah, I don't disagree, and I think it's a good thing to have in place. You know, it's interesting that we have mutual aid for police, we have mutual aid for fire, and we didn't have it for an EMA process, but this covers it pretty well.
Any further comments or discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll. Is Ed?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Five, nothing, Patty.
I'll need signatures, or Patty will for that. One other thing that came up today, we have been working with our legal team on transferring ownership of the Blue Sort Building. They're prepared to do that within the next couple of weeks. Our attorney says I need a motion to authorize the town manager, treasurer, to close, transfer the ownership of the Blue Sort Building to the Fund of Jupiter. We had a quick claim deed set up, and it'll probably be at the next meeting, but they said that we need the motion from the board of selectmen to move on that, so I'll entertain that as well.
So moved.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? So just for the public to understand a little bit better, the metal building at the tannery site, the Blue Sort Building, is the final piece of the puzzle that Mark Cahya has a hold of, and we've been trying to turn that back over to him. And what this will do is finalize that project so that we can sign off on that and get the money that he owes us for it.
So approximately $104,000 in back taxes and other fees for Kredary fencing and smaller items. We'll clean that all up and get that off our plate, which will be, it's been quite a process.
No further discussion. I'll go through the roll. Is Ed?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Five, zero.
Very good. Just to keep you abreast, I haven't got your financials for this past month, but I'll get that to you in a couple of weeks. But I did get reports on our revenue sharing and excise tax. It's still continuing to grow. If it stays on the track, we'll exceed what we did last year, which is totally unexpected. So that's good news. Also, I heard from Ryan Hale. He is the financial guy that manages Lena Clark Funds, the cemetery one and the one for the building. And he sent an email today that we're going to talk this week, that it looks like the market's getting better. So this past year, we did not get as much interest as we normally receive, so it's been rather tight. And we have been spending it down over the last five or six years, making improvements on this building. So that's coming. So otherwise, things are status quo, waiting for Wright Pierce to start next month on the well exploration, aquifers for the water department. And we'll see how long it is before the snow disappears and public work can take their plows off. Otherwise, it's relatively quiet. That's all I have.
Does anybody have any questions, Steve? No? If not, we'll move on. Selectmen Communications, they have nothing important to report. Is, I'll bring us to our accounts payable. We have a payroll warrant, number 54, for March 4th, 2021, for the amount of $70,610.63. We have a payroll warrant, 55, for March 11th, 2021, for the amount of $69,177.09. We have another payroll warrant from March 11th, 2021. This was because there was a mistake on the other one. There's a payroll warrant, 57, for the amount of $1,043.40. And we have a count. Payable warrant, 56, for March 11th, 2021, for the amount of $845,830.98. I'll make a motion that we pay our bills. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. No further discussion. I'll go through the roll. Is Ed?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Thank you. Now comes the fun part. We've got to go through the warrant articles for the town meeting. What I'll do is I'll read down through the articles, and then we have to record our vote as whether we approve them or not. We will not be doing a roll call vote. We don't need a motion. Is, I will read the article and just ask all in favor, if I can have a simple show of hands, and we'll go on from there. Article one is to elect a moderator. Article two is to elect by secret ballot two selectmen and one school board member. Those don't need our vote. But then we have Article three. Shall the town vote to adopt the proposed amendments to the land use ordinance? And there will be an exhibit A attached to it. All those in favor? Zero, no. Article four. Shall the town vote to adopt the proposed amendments to the zoning map? And an exhibit B will be attached. All those in favor? Five, zero. Article five. Shall the town vote to adopt the proposed ordinance entitled "Burick Food Sovereignty"? Exhibit C will be attached. All those in favor? Five, zero. Article six. Shall the town vote to use up to $2,400,000 from estimated revenues to reduce the amount to be raised by taxation for fiscal year 2021-22, which begins July 1st, 2021? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article seven. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $415,400 for the general expense account for fiscal year 2021-22? All those in favor? Five, zero. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $481,450 for the town administration account for fiscal year 21-22? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article nine. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $290,904 for the town clerk account for fiscal year 21-22? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 10. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $186,601 for the planning account for the fiscal year 2021-22? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 11. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $117- Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $117,832 for the assessors' office for the fiscal year 2021-22? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 12. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $165,750 for the town hall account for fiscal year 2021-22? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 13. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate, appropriate the sum of $54,526 as a second loan payment for the purchase of LED lighting as authorized by passage of article three at the November 5th, 2019 supplemental town budget? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 14. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 for the general assistance account for fiscal year 2021-22? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 15. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,60679 for the police department account for fiscal year 2021-22? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 16. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,119,667 for the fire department account for fiscal year 2021-22? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 17. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,237,522 for the public works account for fiscal year 2021-22? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 18. Shall the town vote to authorize the expenditure of all revenues received from the state of Maine Urban Rural Initiative Program for fiscal year 2021-22 for road improvements as authorized by the program, with unspent balances to be carried forward each year? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 19. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $591,255,000 for the refuse disposal account for fiscal year 2021-22? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 20. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the, from taxes, a sum of $263,677, $667,000 for the recreation account for fiscal year 2021-22? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 21. So, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $291,702 for the Burick Public Library account for fiscal year 2021-22? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 22. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $498,646 for debt service to cover the appropriation for fiscal year 2021-22 as authorized by passage of article 31 and 32 at the annual, 2016 annual town meeting, and article five at the November 6th, 2018 referendum election? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 23. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $21,700 for the community agency appropriations account for fiscal year 2021-22? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 24. Shall the vow, town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $196,388 for the annual fire protection, fire hydrants cost for fiscal year 2021-22? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 25. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $600,000 for use of road, bridge, and sidewalk construction and repairs, as well as town parking lots and public ways, and including expenses for curbing drainage engineering fees when required, with funds to be used in conjunction, conjunction with state of Maine Urban Rural Initiative Program, and with unspent balances to be carried forward each year? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 26. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $29, uh, $23,900 for the federal stormwater program for fiscal year 2021-22, and place this amount into the account established for this purpose, with unspent balances carried forward each year until fully expended? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 27. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sun of $10,000, the sum of $10,000 for economic development purposes for fiscal year 2021-22, and place this amount into the account established for this purpose, with unspent balances to be carried forward each year until fully expended? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 28. Shall the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with landowners and to purchase property from landowners for the purpose that allows the expansion of Memorial Field? Funding for the purchase will be used from impact fees that are allowed to be used for these types of community projects? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 29. Shall the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to sell or transfer a 10 school street MAP U 001 lot 007, a town-owned property, including land and buildings, and including the execution of all agreements and other documentation to effect such sale or transfer for, as it deems advisable and in the best interest of the town? This article refers to the old fire station only. All funding from the sale will be used to pay down the fire station bond? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 30. Shall the town approve a capital project consisting of various renovations, upgrades, and improvements to the Burick Water Plant, including engineering and design costs, transaction costs, and other expenses reasonably, reasonably related thereto? Appropriate the sum of $1,200,000 to provide for the cost of the project and raise funds from user fees. Authorize the treasurer and chairman of the board of selectmen to fund the appropriation through the issuance of general obligation securities of the town, with or without call provisions, with or without premiums, and including temporary notes of, in anticipation of the sale, in an aggregate, aggregate principal sum, uh, some amount, boy, not to exceed $1,200,000, and to delegate the treasurer and the chairman of the board of selectmen the authority and discretion to fix the dates, maturities, interest rates, denominations, calls for redemption, with or without premium, refunding form, and other details of said securities, including authority to execute and deliver the securities on behalf of the town? Funding will be raised by user fees. The debt service for this loan will be paid by the water department users only? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 31. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $21,634 for debt service in fiscal year 2021-22 and authorized by passage of article 37 at the 1997 annual town meeting? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 32. Shall the town vote to accept James Way as a public right of way as requested by residents? All those in favor? Five, zero. Shall the town vote to accept Riverbend as a public right of way as requested by residents? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 34. Shall the town vote to authorize the select board and treasurer to accept on behalf of the town any gifts of money or property, including trust funds that may given, be given or left to the town for the purpose of supporting Burick Community Television? Placing such funds into a non-lapsing account and to authorize the expenditures of any such funds for the operating expenses of and/or capital improvements for Burick Community Television? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 35. Shall the town vote to authorize the use of interest money from the Lena Clark Trust Fund Interest Account when there are major repairs or maintenance needs at the town hall? All those in favor? Five, zero. Article 36. Shall the town vote to charge interest on unpaid taxes at the rate of 6% per annum and to set the date when taxes committed for fiscal year 2021-22 become due and payable as of October 12th, 2021, and April 12th, 2022, with said interest to be collected after October 13th, 2021, and April 13th, 2022, and allow the tax collector to accept prepayment of taxes prior to the tax commitment date? All those in favor? Five, zero. And article 737. Shall the town vote to set an interest rate of 4% as allowed by state law as a rate to be paid to taxpayers who pay amounts in excess of amounts finally assessed and authorize any such interest paid on collectible taxes or abatements granted to be charged against the annual overlay? All those in favor? Five, zero. And that is it. Thank you for that one. All right. So, that brings us to new business. Quick claim deeds is the next one. We have one quick claim deed. It appears to be for a, uh, piece of property that we had a lien on and they've paid all the taxes and fees on it.
In full.
In full. So, I need a motion to accept the quick clean deed for MAP U 005 lot 42.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll. Ed?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. I, I like those where we able to give the property back to the owners after we've made arrangements. Makes it a lot neater.
That was a tough one. Got it taken care of.
All right. Um, we have no abatements or supplements. There is no second public comment that I can see of. And we have no executive session. Does anybody have any other business or non-agenda items they'd like to bring up?
I did want to say, uh, that I think that our, uh, Public Works has done a great job this season. Uh, it's been a crazy weather season with wind, with wind and ice and snow. And I've heard no significant complaints about them. I've always been able to get to work and the trees have been cleaned up really well. I just want to give them a shout out and say they've been doing a great job.
Thank you. They are a good group.
Yep. They've been hot at work, that's for sure.
Yeah. Just a reminder too, that next Tuesday at 6 o'clock, we have a meeting with, um, the planning board, um, in Envision Burwick.
Yep.
Um, it's a thing that we try to do quarterly. Um, it's kind of difficult with the, um, pandemic stuff, COVID, but, uh, James and I have set that up, so, um, should be a good discussion. That's all it will be, but.
Any further comments? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn. I'll second it. All those in favor? Aye. Have a good night, guys.
Night. Right on time, Patty.
7:15.